This is a month that we're paying attention to a lot of good causes and this happens to be one of them. And so I would like to invite Carol Costello with the Board of Education and Officer Jerry Kendall from HPD up to receive these proclamations.
What's left of Officer Kendall.
There you are. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. This is a proclamation for Bullying Awareness and Prevention Month, October 2014. Whereas bullying is a physical, verbal, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people. And whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, and schools through technology such as the internet and cell phones, often referred to as cyberbullying. Whereas cyberbullying can occur on social media sites at any time and inappropriate and harassing messages can be posted anonymously and distributed quickly to a wide audience, which can be detrimental to the victim's confidence and self-respect. And whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually. And targets of bullying and cyberbullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems. Students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, and attending community activities. And whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors, children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated. Now therefore, be it resolved with the support of the City Council, I, David Geisbert, the Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, Maryland, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Bullying Awareness and Prevention Month and encourage our citizens to acknowledge and heighten awareness about the serious issues and negative effects of bullying. So I know we invited both of you here today. And if you don't mind, just talking about, Carol, maybe talk about the programs in place that the schools have. And I know there's a state requirement for bullying reporting, and can you maybe speak to how that works in the schools?
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you very much for this invitation and for this honor. We, as a school system, are just, first of all, just grateful that you would call attention to this particular issue. As a system, we're working very hard to ensure that our schools are welcoming and safe places for students to come every day and to learn. We have all kinds of programs and efforts that are aimed at really encouraging that kind of safe and welcoming environment, not the least of which is our Olvea's Bullying Prevention Program that's in every school in the county. But more than anything today, I guess I just want to thank you for calling attention to the idea that bullying prevention is everyone's business and that it's really about treating each other with respect and civility. And that begins with each one of us in each of our affairs, and it begins in our homes. And it carries over, of course, into our schools, and we work very hard, as I say, to combat that. But we appreciate the fact that you would recognize that this is a community issue.
Thank you. Officer Kendall.
Thank you, sir. Again, bullying is something that transgresses the community in many different ways, and it affects more than just the students in the school. It does affect the community as a whole, especially in the new age with the internet and social media. Bullying travels around the world. And it's pressures that kids especially have to deal with that they're not equipped for in today's world to deal with. And it's, with especially with social media, it follows them for years sometimes. And unfortunately, we do lose young ones to suicide or other extreme measures. And it's unfortunate, and we need to call awareness to this and to educate so we can stop, you know, this type of behavior within our community.
I appreciate both of you. Would you like to say something?
One more thing. I just wanted to call attention to the idea that we can't really deal with bullying in the schools until it is brought to our attention. There is a way that anybody who is experiencing bullying, and especially parents, can bring this to our attention. And there is actually a form. It happens, this happens in every school system throughout the state, but particularly in our case, it's on the website, on our WCPS website. And we just urge people, if they are experiencing any kind of harassment or bullying, to bring it to our attention so it can be dealt with.
Absolutely. Can't do anything if you don't know anything about it.
That's correct.
All right. Well, thank you both. I think Ms. Wolf would like to take our picture.
Is anyone in the background?
I'm not going to block up the whole camera.
There we go. All right.
All right. One.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I think next week we'll be celebrating Character Counts Month, which is very appropriate given this topic as well. The next item is our city center holiday parking program. Mr. Dikey, how are you this afternoon?
Good. How are you?
Good, thanks.
Good. This is our annual support of the downtown during holiday season, in which we provide two hours of free parking in our parking decks. Usually starts around Hollyfest. This year, Hollyfest is the Friday before Thanksgiving. We would start, that's the Monday after Thanksgiving, because on Thanksgiving Day, the day after that Saturday, and Sunday's free anyway. So we'll just start at that Monday afterward. And then we would run that through the first of the year until we'd start our regular rates again. Essentially, this is going to make parking free in the decks after 4:00, Monday through Friday, and free all the weekends through the month of December.
I'm assuming that by the silence, there is no objection to the holiday parking program?
Remind me how we publicize this, how we market this?
We'll put it on our website. We'll put it up on the website. That'll be the one thing. We'll probably do a, we can do a notification in the paper, kind of a public notice. That's, it puts flyers in the deck also.
I think it probably should be an article in the paper. Where?
I think I heard him say we might even buy our own advertising to let people know about that, right?
We could do that.
I think it's public service, though.
It would be nice.
Okay.
I guess, are you going to buy a newspaper, Mr. Brubaker, and make that happen?
Okay. Anything else?
And perhaps, Mayor, even though all of us at the table know the answer, some people write in, call into the newspaper, don't, so maybe Eric can tell the world why we don't have free parking on the streets during Christmas and that we have and what the results have been.
It's my understanding that when attempts were made to do free parking on the streets at the meters, basically, people parked there all day, whether it be employees of some of the businesses or others, they're just finding it convenient. And then what happens is the people that you want to come downtown and visit the shops have no place to park.
It's actually less parking.
It actually creates less parking.
And in fact, we had the merchants make a specific complaint and request that we never ever do that again.
That's my understanding. That was a little before my time, but yeah.
One before mine.
Which is an illustration, which also applies to year-round free parking.
Right.
And if they say, "And," well, we have to, if they say, "Okay, have a two-hour limit," well, we have to pay to enforce that without any revenue.
The only positive thing that comes out about from making that decision is then you'd have to raise your rates in the parking deck and having people have to park there. But that makes no sense at all.
Right. And parking's already free in the parking lots and along the street on weekends and after 5:00.
Right.
So if you're coming down to either come to an event or shop in the evenings or go to dinner, it's already, you can find a lot of free parking already.
Thank you.
And you've got your motion attached, Eric, which says both two hours of free parking as well as you lift the gates at 4:00 PM on the decks in the evening.
Yes. If there's anything I need to change in the motion, just let me know. That's a copy of it. If I need to make any modifications, just let me know, and I can make it before next week.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Next item is the General Refund Agency Contributions Draft Policies. So this is something we've been talking about quite a while. The draft policies in your packet, the unallocated expenses, the list of agency contributions also included in there. Staff and I met several times to sort of go over the policy. We do need to, really, I think the biggest question for us is, do we want to limit every year, start out and say, here's the amount that we're going to authorize, and now everything that, all the applications that come in are going to be based on that amount that we've set? Or, well, anyway, we can go through the whole document if you'd like. Does anyone have any immediate questions jumping off?
I think, Mayor, that coming up with an idea is not bad. You know, as it relates to that, I would certainly follow whatever advice finance or our staff would tell us. If they say that's unreasonable, do it in October. That's, I think this would be all staff-driven as far as that goes. But I do absolutely like the idea that we would be done substantially with this process, at least for the applications, by the end of January. And, you know, it's bad enough that we get the applications a week before the budget, but it's more common than not that we get the applications two weeks to two months after the budget has been done. And I think if we do this right and publicize it correctly, I think it's a very big step forward in getting this resolved. It's a much better process than what we've used.
I think we will need to go to a cap. Last spring, I said this is an area where perhaps we could take 75,000 or 100,000. I can recall the exact amount, but it was something like that. It's part of an overall strategy, though. It's part of a whole bunch of things that make the budget work. And then you can work up to that. I mean, I've gamed different scenarios, but everybody's going to have their different idea of what's a core institution or core service is always the issue.
And however, having said that, I also think that what we as a council have to do is what I believe, what we've all stated over and over again. I think there are certain, quote, "agencies" on this list that should not be subject to these. My biggest example would be the Hagerstown Municipal Band.
I want to agree with you. I think that's very important.
I do not think the Hagerstown Municipal Band has to compete for funding. I think that is, I do not see that as an agency contribution, quite candidly. Maybe it needs to be taken out of that entire nomenclature. I see that much more of an arm of the City of Hagerstown. I see the art museum as not an issue of whether or not, it's just a matter of what level of funding we can afford, because that is an institution that we have a historical and arguably contractual relationship, at least morally, from the founders of that museum on right up continuing to an agreement of support by the City of Hagerstown, and it always has been done. There may be others who can look at this. You know, the library is an interesting discussion. I've always thought that we should fund the library, but that's subject to discussion. But I believe those two items should have a standalone.
Well, that's one of the discussions we had when we were drafting this policy is, you know, we kind of knew that there were at least one or two of these agencies, and maybe others have other thoughts about other agencies, but that perhaps didn't belong in this category. So the question becomes, what category do they belong in?
Well, do they belong in a different one is the first question.
Sure.
But, you know, I said it's hard to identify core institutions. I certainly agree with you, although I don't think the amount should be held harmless. And I've gamed different scenarios here. Let's say we had a ceiling of $200,000. Well, if you called, this is just a hypothetical, if you called the art museum a core, they gave it 25,000. If you called, skip community rescue for a minute, if you called the municipal band essential, but we give them 18 now, we cut them only to 15. If you gave the Maryland Symphony Orchestra 15, another important musical group, right? If you gave the Maryland Theater, another core institutional one, 25. If you gave the library, cut them to 25. There's cuts involved there, but that brings all the major groups to either 25 or 15. When you do that, you come out to 155,000, leaving only 45,000, you know, to go to all, whatever else we want to fund. So that's just an example that even with those cuts, and, oh, I forgot, a key one. Community rescue, I haven't cut, because I consider them, talk about things that aren't really an agency, that are an essential public service. I even raised them to 50 in my little game there, just using round numbers. So if you do all that, raising them to 50, I mean, I think they're as much deserving as being set aside as the band, because they perform a vital public service every hour of the day, you know?
The other hard thing for, I think, anybody is to say no. Because all of these are worthy causes, one never on another.
But I'm trying to say yes, but at a reduced amount, because we have to reduce everything else. And for reducing city expenditures, we've got to reduce. We can't just keep going the same.
In the same respect, I completely agree with Councilmember's theory. There is another way to look at the methodology, though.
There's a million ways.
Well, no. And the other way to look at the methodology is for certain of these groups saying, no, we're not going to cut their funding. We're, how it's going to be funded is by total loss of funding from other groups on this list. And that's where the hard to say no becomes. But if we find, you know, council member may have identified, we may, what we may end up doing is identifying five or six of these that actually need to be funded and say that, you know what, we're not going to have a $473,000.
Well, we won't. That's inflated by the 200.
The Maryland Theater.
The 273 is the real number.
335 wasn't a crazy number. That, again, I guess was, that was Maryland Theater.
It included 60,000.
There was an inflated number in there.
The 273 from the year before, the budget from '14 is pretty much where we had been prior to fiscal year '13 for the past several.
And so I think you do get to the point, I guess I have to agree with Councilmember Brubaker, if we're going to, you have to put a cap. Because if you don't put a cap on it early on, then what happens is you're at a loss.
Well, like I said, those I just threw out added up to 165, and there are 35 left amongst all. I didn't say I could fund all the others. I said there's 35 left for whatever else we're going to do, or else we're going to develop a standard such as serves the total public, something like that. You know, it's hard to write.
Well, that is part of the criteria, if you'll note, the, one of the things we want them to identify, you know, how they're funded locally. So one of the big questions we always have is what other municipalities do they get money from?
I think that's critical, yeah.
We want to know how their grant would be used to support agency operations, services, and capital improvements. We want to see a copy of their most recent budget, their most recent financial reports or audits, if they're wanting more than $5,000, a description of how the agency supports the goals for downtown revitalization, expansion of the arts, culture, and education, neighborhood vitality, quality of life. So there will be a sort of a rubric to measure them by. But I do think it's by virtue of having this process, we're going to open ourselves up for more applications, which means more people are going to want the same amount of pie, which means inevitably what Mr. Metzner and Councilmember Brubaker are talking about is going to have that.
I think maybe at some point, we may have to just say, these are the ones we're going to do, and we can't go through this process.
I'm suspecting that's what our finder tells us.
We can't spin wheels for 5,000 here.
But I do think it is important for there to be this process in place, even if we're going to only fund the same agency we've been funding before, because there has to be that accountability. And people just know that, I think what's frustrating, I hear people saying, is the steady drip, drip of requests that comes in throughout the year and the budget uncertainty that that brings.
Well, there's more nonprofits being added on each year, too.
There's so many nonprofits out there, and many of them don't have the, you know, don't try to come in to us. And if they did, we'd be overwhelmed.
Yeah. But they continue to add more.
Yeah. I'm not saying, I'm not saying things aren't a worthy cause. I think if Discovery Station actually moves, actually decides to move, as I understand they have, they're going, as far as I'm concerned.
I would like to make a comment. Please, Mr. Munson.
I agree with Lou. He mentioned a couple of these, the museum, the municipal band, and probably the library, which we have, as far as I'm concerned, a moral obligation to. We made an obligation with the museum when it opened. The band, if it's cut, I don't know, they work for virtually little or nothing already. I don't understand why they would, there would be a band if we cut it.
But nobody stopped proposing that.
So there are some things which I think should be held harmless. And if they're not, I'm not prepared to vote for the policy.
Well, when you say held harmless, you mean no reduction, or do you mean?
I mean, no reduction.
Okay. Well, I see I can't agree with that. I think they're all valuable. I just listed a bunch, and I don't see how you can say the library's more valuable than the art museum, et cetera, et cetera. I support them both.
But nobody's saying that.
No. I'm not saying that.
Well, if we hold, if we hold their funding levels even, then we're not going to, we aren't going to have anything left, anybody else.
Well, that's, that's the point.
And that, maybe that's where we need to go.
Where we need to be.
But it seems to me arbitrary that we give the art museum 40,000, and the library 30, and the Maryland Theater a lot less than that, et cetera, et cetera, you know?
Well, I can understand.
On an annual basis.
I can understand those discussions about the amount of funding on some of these. But I think we're very close to having the discussion of, yes, funding fewer of these, many fewer. I mean, the funding of four, just four, and Martin's already said it, the art museum, community rescue, the municipal band, and the library, at the current funding today, or the funding of 2012, 2013, or, I mean, '13, '14, the 273, 131,000.
Yeah, but I didn't, but I, my proposal, I was saying 25, 25, 25, you know?
No, I understand.
The exception to community rescue.
Right.
It's not a proposal.
But I certainly agree, though, with Councilmember Munson, myself, for instance, I would, I would absolutely not reduce the contribution to the band. I think we are a major funding source, and I look at them as an extension of.
Okay. I said 15 is theoretical.
I understand.
They're 17, 5. I'm not trying to cut the band out.
I know you're not.
I mean, it makes like, and I'm just gaming it.
Mr. Alshar.
Well, but nobody's proposed the band, and it sounds like somebody has. I don't think they're in any danger. I'm sorry.
For me, I think we remove the numbers from the sheet of paper first.
Which is what I tried to do. And then I tried to look at the names and say, okay, which ones are generally associated with basic city functions that we have traditionally provided, either in total or some assistance to, that aren't arguably competitive with another entity that you could reasonably argue is just as worthy. And for me, it was seven of them, which was the art museum, CRS, the municipal band, the symphony orchestra, the theater, the library, as those core entities. I don't think, to me, it mattered what money I was giving to them at first as much as it did identifying those that I feel are not one of the other hundreds of competitive nonprofits that you could equally make an argument for. And then for me, from that list, I tried to remove those entities which you could make that argument for. For instance, and I'm not picking on CASA in particular, but I could make as clear an argument for Safe Place, or Apples for Children, or the Community Free Clinic, or Walnut, I mean, as a comparable type of, you know, service within the community in which, you know, our public should rightly decide if they want to invest their personal funds and not us as a public entity. And I tried to remove those. And then if you look at the list, there's really about half a dozen that are very small amounts. And I removed them from the list entirely and said, what I see other jurisdictions do, which is that that agency contribution of 1,500 is nothing. I mean, it's zero. It might as well be zero. But you could probably gobble up all of them if you were to establish your agency contribution at a reasonable level, whether it's 5K or 10K. It takes care of these little 250 to 500 request, and you simply say, look, this is going to be for requests to come in throughout the year that are less than 1,000 bucks. And, you know, you get them, and you can see at least a half. You would sort of enlarge the unspecified. Yeah, and remove these, because every one that you list here specifically for that small amount, you might as well list 50 to 100 others for that equal small amount, and you just get rid of that altogether. And then you identify and say, okay, these are our seven core entities we've identified. Can you go over those seven again? Because I was trying to follow there, and I only found six. I got the art museum, the CRS, the municipal band, the orchestra, the theater, and the library.
And Maryland Symphony Orchestra.
I got that.
The orchestra, theater.
Sure. I'll address number seven a little differently. And I actually cut that one in half, because I feel like there is a desire to sort of wean that away from this funding mechanism, and that's HNDP. You know, I think there are other avenues in which to address that. But that was one of the seven. Right. But I think that that one is one you move into some other, you know, process that we've identified before. But so then you're, that leaves you that seven, which then would be reduced once that's changed. And really, the seven one would be your unspecified agency contribution. When I did that and then plugged back in the numbers, just doing that reduces it down to 220. And then. With just the seven? Yeah. And then I just came up with a figure of 225 as being my ceiling. It's not some huge astronomical cut, but I think it aligns what you're trying to do with the ones that you're trying to identify as quasi-city-related services. And that 225, I think, is any reasonable figure for a municipality of our size, you know, to put in. And it leaves a little bit of room then, and are unspecified, more room than we have now for those decisions to be made, you know, to some degree outside of this table.
You're really at 250, because you moved HNDP somewhere else. So it's really 250.
Yeah, and.
Net effect on the budget. I'm thinking a net impact on the budget. He's really at 250. Not a criticism, just trying to say, I'm trying to get the money down.
And what I would say is, again, I have absolutely zero problems with Kristin's proposal. None at all. And I think what we've heard so far is an indication that as well thought out as the policy is, that you're getting a real good policy very quickly by saying, these are the only things we're going to fund, and then coming up with levels.
But we've reduced it 25,000.
Well, so far, we haven't, so far, what Kristin's proposal was, and he put a value on what's there now, but he also said you start with forgetting about the money side, just looking at what groups were.
We all listed about, close to the same one.
That's right.
We all did.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm trying not to have a discussion about money.
That's right. And I agree. If we list those, I think we can all agree that those alone, probably if we funded them at the same level as we, it's too much.
Having said I agree with that, I've said those are the core ones.
And what I'm saying is, it may turn out that funding at the same level is too much. Whether it does or it doesn't, it seems pretty clear that there is not going to be funding available under what we anticipate budget-wise coming up this year, right? I mean, we're going to be looking at every ability we have to make cuts.
If you remember, last spring, I presented a bunch of things, and I had ranges, because I didn't want to say how much. The range here, I believe, was 50 to 100,000. We're just at 25 now.
And so my point is, and it doesn't, you have an associated money with it.
The money.
That's not the idea.
I'm not really sure we're going to get to where I would envision that I think we're going to be with the policy.
I have one other question that I can ask for everybody here, because I don't know the answer to it. Do we have any type of contractual, and I use that word loosely, with our, is there a commitment we've made for the university system scholarships?
There was one in the past where we had done a pledge for four to five years, and we've already have met that commitment. So then we've kind of renewed annually.
That's totally fine. I just wanted to make sure whether or not that.
No.
Because I do believe the way to do this is under the method that we've been discussing, and that is identify what we're not willing to remove. And I think when you do that, you find that there is no room for anything else to be funded, let alone potentially not enough room to fund all of those that we've identified at the level we've already funded them in the past. all of those that we've identified at the level we've already funded them in the past.
So what I hear folks saying is that we've sort of identified the core services, or the ones that we're already funding. Am I hearing you say that you don't think we need a policy, or that we shouldn't even have those agencies apply and give us, supply us the information we're looking for?
For me, I think the initial tenets of the policy should be to determine how to separate those core.
Call them priority funding.
Or just call them standing items.
Priority funding.
Yeah, I think if you don't do that, then.
It's awfully hard to do.
I didn't find it hard to do. I mean, for me.
No, I agree.
For me, I removed six in about thirty seconds.
But you're misinterpreting what I say. I don't find it hard to, I think we all have a pretty common thing. I'm saying it's hard to write criteria that include all those, within those criteria that don't include everything else, or vice versa. You write them so tight, you write things out. I'm not saying it's hard to come to the conclusions that we've all come to. That's not my point.
And for me, once you remove those entities, for me, you've got about ten thousand left. And that's what you have. I'm with Councilmember Munson, that I don't feel that you need at this point, and again, I'm trying to stay from the discussion of money, I'm not real sure we need to go through and say, you know, out of those six or seven, we're going to cut them at all. That, to me, for me, hasn't been the priority of this, getting this nailed down up to this point. It's been that every three months, we get another entity, and we say, okay, where can we add them to the board? Well, we'll move that one out, and we'll take this one over, and we might add this one next week. And there's really no, there's no rhyme or reason to that.
Well, I think there is a rhyme or reason.
Does the draft policy address that at all?
Excuse me, but I think there is, I'm going to defend my proposal. It's not really a proposal at this point. It's gaming it. You know, I haven't actually proposed those cuts at this time, but I know I'll take the heat for it. But so what? We've got to reduce the budget. I said, what's fair? About forty for one, thirty for another, ten for another? I can't think of rhyme nor reason why those amounts are, except they just existed for all the time I've been on the council. To me, having, okay, those are all our priority items. Here's what we can afford. You know, let's do twenty-five to these that have been getting the higher amounts. Let's do fifteen to the two sympho, to the two musical institutions. And let's do fifty for community rescue, which for me is really on the public safety side, and is one that doesn't belong in this list. But, and that gets us to, you know, we can get to two-hundred easily. And I agree, HNDP, I had penciled in twenty-five questioning, because I think, I mean, can we even be neither here nor there with that item, which is basically the home store, I guess, anymore.
But do we not get back to the essential issue? Because I couldn't agree more. I think we're all somewhat in agreement with what's being discussed, and that is that we can identify as a council right now. I don't think there's anybody in the council that disagrees with Kristin's seven, with the understanding of HNDP. Okay? I'm not talking about funding. I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about money. I'm talking about those seven the way they were described to us. Because if that's correct, funding isn't so important right now, and we don't even have to discuss it right now, because I tell you what you need to do, and the reason that what the policy should do is make us make these decisions, if possible, in the month of October, because there needs to be letters sent out to every one of the nonprofits that are being funded, or may consider wanting funding of any level of significance. Because we are going to have, and where there has to be some type of thought policy, or thought process on the policy, which is really bad because it's such small amounts, is how that extra money gets distributed, is the requests come in. But otherwise, there needs to be notifications so we don't end up in late April and May of having organizations come in to us and describe that their fiscal year is the same as ours, and they're shocked. They can't go forward without our funding, and express to us the problems that are going to occur. And we all know how life is at that stage of the game with the budget. So, for me, for one, I would suggest we agree that these are seven that are going to be funded, and that we indicate that for next fiscal year, there are not going to be any other funding outside of what has to be determined, how you figure out with what Kristin, which I agree with him, is indicating should go into the other agency, or unspecified agency contributions.
So, I just want to make sure we're clear. Are we not going to ask the seven core entities to even apply?
I think we should.
At least create some accountability there?
Absolutely. You have two of them that do on an annual basis already. The library and the museum have annually, every year, for at least twenty years.
Have had a report.
Have had a report, have had us for lunch, have had an hour presentation of what they do, how they do it, and why they do it.
And so the next question is, do then, does, do we want to have, I mean, does the policy work that's being proposed? I mean, because essentially, what's being said is, we're going through the timeline, that the mayor and council establish the total funding for the coming year, by the end of October. We distribute application packets in November, with maybe the understanding that there is no money, so you can, you know, here's the smaller pot within the pot of agency contributions that is available, and we'll take the applications and review them and make decisions accordingly. And then they would turn them in by Friday, second Friday of January, and then, of course, we would have the budget wrapped up by the end of May. I mean, this seems to be a pretty, it's not a complicated policy, but it creates some kind of structure and flow. But like you say, we will be notifying the agencies.
However. If we're going to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lou.
Well, when I look at the application, I think we just need to make clear, it describes what somebody has to do if they're asking us for more than five thousand dollars in funding. And under what I think we're talking about, unless somebody tells me differently, under unspecified agency contributions, do any of us expect that we would fund any other agency in excess of five thousand, given that we're setting aside, what's your proposal, Kristin, ten, and it may not even be ten? And the only reason I point that out is I would hate to invite people to go through this process for the over five thousand dollars when we know for a fact that they're not going to get over five thousand dollars, because it's not available. So we would make clear.
Well, that's what I'm saying. When we send agency packets out in November, we will have already determined what the cap is, and what is available for unspecified, or, yeah, for unspecified agency contributions. We say, here's the total amount the city's working with this year, keep in mind. You know, we can put that in the packet that we send out. But I would like to know, even from the seven, if, you know, all of a sudden the orchestra has benefactor that they're getting money from, maybe they don't need our seventeen-five anymore.
Mayor, and the same thing with community rescue service. There was a time when CRS did not get any financial support from the city at all. And I'm not saying that they're not a core essential service. They are. But again, when you look at, you want to see what their budget is. A lot of times, you know, we have to make a decision, for example. You're going to look at certain agencies that have reserves, that have substantial reserves, that are seeking us to give them money. And that may be one of them. And I'm not saying we should not, but that is why, in fact, we should be making the request that they apply and they give us the information.
How long has it been since CRS has sent anything? I know when I was on before, they would even come in and do the presenting. So after that, the other three and a half years, I have no idea.
They send in information now, when they send their letter back requesting.
Okay.
Well.
So in January.
I add up that the seven, the current level of funding, I'll revise, I'm not making proposals here, but I'll revise my thought. Let's keep the current level of funding, including twenty-five for HNDP, which is not the current level of funding, but it keeps us within two-hundred. I only get one hundred and eighty-seven at the current level of funding for every, and that's nine for the theater, because that was their annual amount. And we can justify that, because we're giving them large capital sums, otherwise. So it's, they're a little bit different story. But I only get one hundred and sixty-two for the six agencies, plus twenty-five for HNDP, you know, encouraging them to find the other twenty-five for their services. So that gets us at, even at two-hundred, that leaves thirteen thousand for unspecified agency contributions, or the, let's say, we decide the scholarship's a valuable thing, or whatever.
So what I hear is that we kind of do want a policy. The draft policy may in fact work with the understanding that we all agree that these seven core.
Core institution policies.
Agencies are going to be.
I mean, that's where I was going.
Maintain, have a sort of a maintenance of effort.
Well, and I think that would be part of this policy. That would be part of the policy, in fact, that these have been determined to be seven.
You want to write that into the policy, though? Or is that just a decision we make at the end of October, when we establish the level of funding?
Personally, myself, I would make it a policy. One can always change policies, okay? One can always change policies. But I would like these institutions to know that they are part of a policy, because we have, especially with at least four of them, I think have more than just we should give that we have.
So as part of the policy, should they then, they won't fill out the application, but there'll be like a special reporting?
They'll have finances.
For them. So take out the application part, but require the reporting part?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, reporting, and who they're getting their funding from, that sort of.
Right.
Some of the same elements.
It's critical to get that from.
We agree they are to be funded, but nobody's agreed what the funding level is yet. And so that would be information we would need.
So we're not, so as part of, we're going to name the group, but not say anything about maintaining the current level of funding?
That would be my proposal.
I just want to make sure, because.
I think that's better.
I think that'd be my proposal. I think every council has got to struggle with the budget and how they handle it. We're trying to identify what we believe are core essential things for us to fund. And right now, we know, you know, everybody will have a different opinion or the same opinion. But that would be the way I would do it. I've already identified what I certainly would not cut, but that, I don't think you can mandate that in a policy.
Keeping in mind that we're talking about a total amount of less than one cent on the tax rate. I mean, so the main things, obviously, are our public safety, our fire, police, you know, infrastructure, you know.
In the same respect, we're doing this because the amount of the budget is so small, and the amount of time we spend on it in comparison is so huge, that it gets so frustrating when we're really trying to struggle with ways to cut our budget in March and April and May.
And that's really the goal of the policy, is just to create some kind of sanity to the process.
Right, and stability for everybody.
So that there's a process, at least, and that we don't have this constant trickle of requests.
And you're never going to get the budget down if you say, well, it's only this, or it's only that. That's why I had a whole page-long list of things that we're going to have to take from. Some things you can't, you know. So you only have some things that are variable. This is one of them.
Well, there's one thing that seems to be missing from this policy, and that's the possibility of the, some of them being limited in time. Perhaps some of these agencies should be able to get funds for, say, five years, or three years. With that understanding right up front, we give it, you get it for three years. You're going to have to apply every year, but you get it for three years, or five years. But after that, you won't. At least that gives them time to think about it, and figure out how they're going to make up for not getting those funds in the fifth year, or the fourth year, whatever. I think that's something that could be considered in a policy.
You're talking about some kind of time-limited contribution?
But you're talking about other than these seven.
Yeah, other than the seven, absolutely.
I don't know where, I would say twofold on that. I would say, one, that if they didn't get those warnings, this last year's budget, when every one of them spoke to us, and we told them about next year. And two, quite candidly, I'd like to know how we can afford it. I mean, I would like to continue, this is why I think we've got to make decisions now.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with what Marty just said a few minutes ago, with what you're saying. I'm just saying for future reference, that maybe.
Yeah, but I'm.
Okay, you mean for, out of this fifteen thousand dollars. But, yeah, again, I don't, I don't know, because you don't know who you're going to be funding.
Yeah, well, there is that, yes.
And every year, you can decide, you know, based on the applications, and who's applying, and what do you have available, whether or not you want to fund something.
But it's all hinges on what we do have available. And that's why I don't want to go to, okay, looking at three years you can have in that. No, I don't want to do that.
Good job.
Does staff know, have any questions for clarity in terms of cleaning up the draft policy?
Just from the standpoint for the unspecified, we have this timeline in there. Are we saying that the timeline would be the same, that I would send the memos out in November?
Yep.
And I would continue to send to all these small agencies, let them know that we have nothing that would be designated just for them, that they would be considered into this lump sum amount?
I think that's a very good idea.
And then they would be selected and identified throughout May and June, when we do our budget reviews? Or do we envision them, all of them coming in and doing a presentation?
I didn't.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with where I think Kristin is on this. I'm not sure what the value is of going through the process when there's so little to be.
Right.
Distributed, and having staff spend all that time. We're looking to reduce burden on staff, returning staff back.
Does that require?
And by the way, I think Dawn's idea, for whatever we have left, tell somebody, okay, we're going to give you two thousand a year, but it's only for three years. I don't think it's a bad idea.
Because then it frees up that, whatever little money we have, if there's other agencies.
Well, I don't think it's a bad idea.
How about part of the policy, and I don't know what the figure is, but I think it would help everybody else, if all these agencies, you're talking about writing this letter to, knew what our cap for any of these agencies was going to be as far as funding, okay? Because if we have, for instance, fifteen thousand dollars for other agency contributions, if we don't plan on giving any of these other agencies more than X amount of dollars, we would have said that in the application. Otherwise, we're going to say, we have a fifteen-thousand-dollar pool available, and there's thirty agencies that are going to apply.
For fifteen thousand dollars.
And we'll have thirty agencies applying for fifteen thousand dollars. And then they won't know how their budget looks until we make the decisions. If we let them know that there will be a maximum amount of this pool of twenty-five hundred dollars, just by way of example, then they know right off the bat, as soon as they see this, that that's their max. And we're not going to find out in May or June that, oh my God, we were counting on, and we're shocked. And then we're put in the position of saying, you know, we have some fault in this, like sometimes we do. So I would propose, whatever the amount be, and I would suggest twenty-five hundred dollars is not a bad amount.
Now, I guess the question still is on the table, in terms of how, who determines who gets what out of the remaining pot? Is that something that you want to make a decision around this table? Do you want staff to review the applications? You want me to review them and make a recommendation? You know, there's still that part of the process as well.
So we have the seven identified. We have fifteen thousand dollars left. We get.
We cap.
Thirty to forty.
Right.
Applications. And even though we tell them, because I've been telling them religiously for the past several years, we, there will be no increase in our budget. What you received in the past, we will not foreseeably be able to do higher. And invariably, every year, everybody's request still comes back higher than what we funded. So we get all these thirty, and they're all asking for all this money. At what point in the process, in the timeline, will we pick these small amounts to be given? Like, who receives?
So, under the timeline, the applications will be received by when?
Still the second Friday of January. That's pretty key to cutting off my budget process.
I would suggest that by the end of February, we determine as a council what agencies will get funding. what agencies will get funding, without worrying about the amounts, knowing that there's a $2,500 cap, just like we just did here. We can spend 15 or 20 minutes-
Right, thumbs up, thumbs down.
-taking a look at every agency, because it's going to be pretty quick, I think, for, for what our past experience is, given what our budgetary constraints will be, to make those kinds of decisions.
Any other thoughts on that process?
I, I just hope we can, the staff can, I'd be open to just, to streamline this and make it as little staff burden as possible. And I do think, however, that we should have essentially some key critical information from those seven groups, just for the record, you know? But, but for the, I don't know how to streamline it at this moment, but I, I just, I'm trying to save staff time. And Lou, maybe that's implicit in what you say.
Well, it's pretty streamlined for this reason.
Yep.
We, we know that the major, that these seven will have no problems giving us the information. You look at the seven, we've dealt with them all, they're, they have professional staff, it's all done. I mean, you know who we're looking at. There's not one of the seven that does not have this on hand available. Under this policy, the only thing that these others have to do, as I understand it, is fill out this front page. Period. You don't have to give any other financials. It's the description of how they would use the money, where they're getting other local funding from, how it supports the city, and, and one other issue, very simple questionnaire, therefore requires very little time of staff, other than to assemble it all, because nobody has to review financials from these folks. That's why I want to make sure we have a limit, so that they know, they don't have to supply us that stuff.
Okay.
And then staff doesn't have to review it. And then they can just put it all together, put it in our lap, and we spend 15 to 20 minutes figuring out which ones we're going to fund, and then we go to the more difficult budget process of deciding how much for everybody.
So, so under that scenario, the seven core agencies would fill out the information under the application, because I think you're, you're right. They've got, you know, staff, that information shouldn't be difficult for them to provide us. And I think that helps mayor and council, because then you know how they're spending the money as well.
Right.
Aside from just giving them money-
Exactly.
You can say it's going for this project. I think it reinforces that this is a grant. Are, are we not establishing the funding amount in October, then? Is that what we're saying? In some ways, I thought you already did tonight. Pretty much what I heard is you're in the 200, 205, right?
I'd say that's correct.
And, and that would, I think that would help finance if we knew that.
Yes.
That, could I just take a shot? If we said 190 for the seven, you guys decide later how you divvy that up. 15 for the others, and the others do the form, would you guys be comfortable with that?
Fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
And then 2,500 a max, so that gives you the potential of, of six, it could be less, it could be more than six.
Right, it'd be more if we funded less than 2,500.
Right.
And we have a lot of those, those, and I think it's important that we keep in mind that we, we have these funding requests of a couple hundred dollars for a table here or a table there, and we want to have the ability to do that throughout the year. So even at the $15,000 level, I think you still want to keep a reserve of maybe $5,000 that you don't, that you want to keep that in reserve throughout the year for these things that come up, that we go, you know, people, the Titanic thing is something I can think about. Yeah, it makes sense to do, and we have the ability to do it then. And I, I think the figures are just fine.
190 and 15, does that help you, Michelle, then?
Yes.
Because that gives you-
And then you would only have 10 to distribute, not 15.
And then we'll, so we'll revise the draft based on the feedback tonight. At least we've established a cap, and then we'll come back with an revised policy.
Well, we've established a cap, and we've established a core institution policy. I think that's pretty major.
Yeah.
Policy does help all of us, too, because it is structured.
It's timeframe.
Helps everyone.
It, it helps everybody.
And we're good with the, we're good with the four questions for the under five.
Good job.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next up is chief of police. Talking about an amendment to chapter 79, the curfew. We introduced an ordinance last week to change the age.
Yes, sir.
But there's been some discussion about further changes to the ordinance, so that's what we're here to talk about tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following our discussion last week, met with, with Mr. Boyer, and to discuss, you know, what, what we can legally and practically pull off when it comes to the curfew, strengthening our curfew ordinance. So we approached it from that standpoint, what's legal and what's practical for us. In order to meet the, the legal standpoint, we looked at the Times, and I know that was a, a key issue for staff, and currently, it's 11 o'clock in the week, during the week, and midnight on the weekends. To back that down to 10 o'clock, we have to establish a need, a governmental need, and it kind of falls in a couple, down two avenues. One is the thought that removing kids off the street keeps them from committing crimes, and the, and equal and important thought is removing them from the streets keeps them from becoming crime victims, and getting them out of that atmosphere. So in order to establish that, that legal standpoint, we need to put a little bit on, a little bit of statistics on the record, so I have a few of those statistics on what crime's been taking place, and general raw numbers in the city, year-to-date, between 10 and 11 o'clock at night. And, and the numbers do support what we're proposing here, which is to, is to, it would support a 10 o'clock discussion, I'll put it that way. So what I'd like to do is just read down through some of these numbers, and again, this is, this is crime that's reported to the Hagerstown Police Department between 10 o'clock and 11 o'clock in the evening, just seven days a week, just right across the board. We didn't break it down during the week. But at any rate, we've had, since year-to-date, we've had one rape, two robberies, five aggravated assaults, 11 burglaries. I'm going to go too fast if somebody wants to take notes.
What, what's the time period?
10 o'clock in the evening till 11 o'clock, just that one hour. So we have to-
These are all age ranges?
This is, this is, this is reported crime. This, these are not arrests. This is reported crime. What's taken place in the city between 10 and 11 that we might want to remove our juveniles out of the picture altogether.
Beginning when?
January 1.
January 1 is what you said.
Year-to-date, January 1.
January 1.
Yes.
Calendar year.
Okay, so these are not juvenile arrests, these are not adult arrests, these are, this is actual reported crime that had to be investigated. Don't have the outcome of every single one of these cases as to who did it. I don't know if adult did it or juvenile did it. But what we're doing here is we're establishing the fact that crime is taking place during that hour, and it's a good idea to take juveniles off the street, whether they be a suspect or a victim of the crime. Okay? So again, one rape, two robberies, five aggravated assaults, 11 burglaries. We've had 18 thefts, 17 theft from motor vehicle, which is one that we get a lot of discussion about. Two theft from motor vehicles have occurred during that time period. Simple assaults, these are not the serious ones, but simple assaults, 27. Disorderly conduct, nine, reports of disorderly conduct. DUIs, believe it or not, six arrests for DUI just in that one time period. Drug, drug crimes, the distribution of drugs, two, two criminal arrests, or, that would have been actual criminal arrests that was reported. So we've had two of those. 11 possession of drug, drugs or drug paraphernalia, one weapons violation, and 37 malicious destruction of property, and that might be vandalism or-
37.
37 in that period of time. That might be the strongest evidence right there at the end, that, that there's, there is some activity going on between 10 and 11 o'clock. I've talked with Mr. Boyer, we believe that that's enough evidence to support what we're, what we're talking about in lowering the time to 10 o'clock. And to get much beyond that, Mr. Boyer might talk about the legalities of it, and the Baltimore model. I also looked at, I had Lieutenant Alexander look up our, through the International Association Chiefs of Police website, the IACP website. He came back with about 20, 27 different model policies that are, that are put out there by different agencies, and some of these are very small agencies, and some are large. And, you know, just under half of them had a 10 o'clock time period, most of them had an 11 o'clock time period, and only one had a 9 o'clock, and it's a very small department. Again, from our discussion a couple of weeks ago about the 9 o'clock, Baltimore has, has taken the lead on that with the 9 o'clock and the two-tier system. There's no research to support that yet, and, and we feel that there's, there's some legal ramifications that they're going to have to work through in the court systems. You want, you want to speak about that at all?
We're, obviously, when you're establishing a curfew, you're impacting people's fundamental constitutional rights, so the courts look at that very closely. The Seminole case is a case out of Dallas, Texas, the Fifth, Fifth Appellate Circuit, federal case, and that upheld the Dallas curfew ordinance, which was from 11:00 PM to 6:00 during the week, and midnight to 6:00 on the weekends. That is how, that is how Maryland's model ordinance came to be. That's where we get these timeframes. There are several jurisdictions in the country who have curfews that begin at 10:00 PM. A lot of jurisdictions have curfews that end at 5:00 AM in the morning. Those things are probably all reasonable and supportable, as long as you've got some support for your deviation from the norm. And I'm saying that 11 to 6:00 is the norm, only because it's, the, the case has actually been determined to be valid. I have, there is not a case that I've found on the 10:00 PM timeframe, although I think we can justify that based on the numbers that we have in front of us. Baltimore City, I think, is going to have to fight to get their 9:00 PM to survive, and they're going to have to show some statistics to support the reason why. So our, my recommendation would be that I think you can consider an earlier curfew, 10:00 PM. I would also recommend, and I think this is probably not statistically supported at this point, but I think the chief would probably concur, that the crime instances that occur between 5:00 AM and 6:00 AM are probably minimal compared to sort of the front end of our ordinance. So I would recommend, rather than expanding the hours that the curfew's in place, just to bump it back an hour, 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM.
On both ends.
On both ends. We're talking about the same number of hours. Helps to be a little more, more reasonable, and, and really, I don't think there's a concern that we would lose any of the effectiveness of the ordinance by making, by bumping it up to 5:00 AM. So that, I think that's where we're headed. I was happy with the numbers that the chief gave me. I think that, that helps us to show why we've deviated from Maryland's model ordinance, and just, you know, slight deviation from the case that's, that's been upheld.
And again, on the weekend, we would move that up one more hour, just like our ordinance is now, so it would be 11 o'clock on Friday and Saturday night, and then on the school nights, it's going to be 10 o'clock. So bumps everything back one hour from where we are.
So that's the legal side, what's practical?
Well, what's practical is we're pushing the practicality at that limit. You know, can we actually go out and, and sweep the streets up? No, we cannot at, at any earlier hour, and 10 o'clock is going to be pushing it. This is going to be difficult for us to enforce. It's a matter of prioritizing things within our department. You know, how many officers do I want to keep available on the street at 10 o'clock and to 11 o'clock? That's a busy time for us. And so we have to be practical in how we enforce this, and when we enforce it. We may have special overtime details that come out into play using some grant funding. Would be one, one model to do it. In the summertime, certainly with our school resource officers, we can shift their hours to work some evenings. That's probably our best and practical aspect of doing it. I don't want to leave the council with the impression that come 10 o'clock every evening, all of our officers change modes into curfew violation, you know, ordinance, but that's, that's not going to happen. But we can certainly apply, you know, one or two days a week through some special enforcement, and then throughout the summer. That's the practical side of things for us. It, it takes time. You, you take a child off, off the street, you, you're, you're taking them into, into your control, your care, your custody, and you have to take them home, you have to get them to tell you their right name, and, and then, you know, take them back over to the parents. As we discussed before, we do, we do what's called a paper arrest. It doesn't sound very strong, but we fill out a juvenile arrest register paperwork, and that paperwork goes to the Department of Juvenile Services. And as I said before, their process at Juvenile Services is the first one, they're going to bring them in for an informal hearing, place them on 90-day supervision. If they don't get in trouble at school, they don't get caught stealing, they don't get caught on another curfew violation, that's going to go away. If they continuously violate that, number two and three, they're going to put them on a, a more strict policy. They're going to bring them in and give them community service and things like that, some, some hours to work off, that sort of thing. They're going to keep them out of the court up until about the fourth time. And even on the fourth time, they're looking for a diversion program, which diverts them out of the court realm for just a, a curfew violation, and then into a diversion program, which is a, the court's way of diverting things out of the mainstream of the court. So there, there will be some application of that, and, and one way to strengthen this, we looked at is, our current, current ordinance has a, as a misdemeanor criminal offense for the child. And what that does, it gives the police the legal authority to take them off the street. You can take them into physical custody to do that. And so keeping it as a misdemeanor does allow us to do that. What we had discussed is a modification to the second component, which gets to the parental side of things, and it's something that Councilman Alshar brought up, is how do we hold parents more accountable? Currently, it's a criminal charge for the parents, and it's not being applied. The courts really don't want to see it, our officers have not applied it, and we don't really want to make the parents criminals, however we want to hold them accountable. So what we're going to propose is making that a civil violation for the parents. They get one warning on the second time, and for all subsequent offenses, it would be a civil offense with a fine imposed against the parents. And it can just be escalate in, in its severity. So I would propose, starting off with a $100 fine, this is for the second offense. So let's say we take the child home the first time, we give the parents the written warning with it, with the paperwork. We can even follow up with a letter from our Crime Prevention Office. Jerry can send them a, a letter, a copy of our ordinance, maybe some materials that, just like the Juvenile Services is going to share with them, all the, all the outlets, so they can ask for help. The second time around, if that child's on the street and gets charged, the parents could be held civilly liable, which is what we would propose, and then have a, a monetary fine with that. Again, keeping it out of the court, not making the parent a criminal, but holding them accountable. So we feel that, that, that is more reasonable, and, and would get applied more frequently than, than what's happening now. So again, keep it, keep it as a misdemeanor for the juvenile, just to give us the authority to, to take action on the street, but then, and it also gives the authority for the Juvenile Services to take that one directly into court if they need to. So if the child is getting in trouble on the street, getting in trouble at school, and got, got, stole some candy from the, from the store, you can take all three of those together as criminal charges into court. And that's usually what happens, they get package deals, because what's happening in the evening is happening in school. So to recap, keep it as a misdemeanor for child. For adults, on the second time around, they get one warning, the second time, it's a civil offense with a $100 fine, and then whatever council wants to do for progression of that, whether they want to make it 250, 500, or 100, 200, 300, that's, that's up to you. So I believe we covered, that's, that's the, the highlights of what we wanted to talk about.
Go ahead, Mr. Alshar.
I don't, I shouldn't say, I didn't envision, I think that, that we should be, we, I should be clear with the public, that I certainly didn't envision that change to this ordinance would constitute that, whether it be 11 or 10, whether it be, you know, 17 or 16, that at whatever hour or whatever age, my expectation would be the police force would go into that mode, if you will, right when that age and hour hit, because simply that isn't practical. But rather, that number one, it clearly boosts awareness within the community that we are serious about the issue, enough to, to propose necessary changes, and number two, that it provides a tool within your police toolbox for the events that call for it. You know, I, I don't envision that, you know, that if there, there's six kids, and they're, they're hanging out on the porch one evening at, at that hour, and doing nothing but sitting there and talking, or whatever, you know what I mean? That you're going into that mode, but rather that it provides that tool in the event that it needs to be appropriately applied.
Absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up.
And I think that that, at least for me, that, that's, that's the key from which, from which I've been operating. The question that I have, though, is I know in the town that I work for, we have- The question that I have, though, is I know in the town that I work for, we have on occasion used a, a letter of no trespass for individuals that have conducted themselves in, in some type of criminal manner on public properties within the municipality and are no longer invited to, to, you know, be on those public properties within the municipality. I don't know if you've used that in the past.
We do.
But, but, you know, given that we're surrounded, you know, we're, we're a population of 40,000 surrounded by 40,000 more people, and, and when we talk about the traversing of individuals in and out of the corporate limits of the city, and the activities of those individuals, to the degree that, that can be appropriately applied, I would hope that we would employ that as, as well.
Certainly, yeah. I'm glad you brought that up. It is, it is, I just sort of said that anecdotally, but we are complaint-driven, so this is gonna be something where, yeah, we get that phone call that there's kids causing some disturbance in the area. You get there, of course, they're not gonna cause the same amount of disturbance when you arrive in the area, so rather than having the officers have nothing to enforce, they would at least say, look at their watch and say, you know, it's after 10:00, it's time to leave, and use it in that, in that tool. But, again, complaint-driven, so we're not just, we, we will not be, you know, driving around purposely looking for this. We get that complaint, it will be a tool for us. And the letter of no trespass, we do use that quite, quite on a regular basis, and we're doing it with the parks mainly.
Yeah.
So, if someone's getting in trouble at the parks, Fair Ground Parks is one of those where they're caught in there after hours, we're sending letters of no trespass to them that they're, that they're violating our, our policies there and, and laws within the court, within the parks.
Okay.
So, we're using, we are using it, and if they get charged with anything, if they violate, commit a crime.
Right.
Drugs or assaults, they get a no trespass letter for the parks. It's a way to help out there.
Chief, I think you've come up with something reasonable, responsible, and thoughtful. Thank you for putting so much effort into it. I support what you've come up with, and I, however, do still support the 17-year-old. Increase to 17. I mean, I assume that you, you still support that.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't bring that up. But, still, as it is, and, and what would happen here tonight, because we're making such significant changes to this, is that we would have to introduce an entirely new ordinance that would include the higher age and the lower time and the criminal and civil like we talked about, and bring that back for one more, one more look for everybody.
Because it's got a significant change to it. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yes.
Mr. Brubeck.
First of all, it says under 17 years of age. It's not 17 and under. It's under.
That's correct.
Under 17, so it's really 16 and under.
Yeah.
Well, we've had people write in that misunderstand. They said, "At age 17, I was doing so-and-so." Well, this doesn't cover 17.
That's correct.
Okay, well, we, I wanna make that clear.
Yeah, it was.
It's under 17. It was under 16.
Yes.
Yeah. But, it's under, it's not 17 and under, it's under 17, so it's up to age 16. And I, I've had letters that showed that wasn't understood. We've all had them. Second thing is, I know you've said this before, but could you summarize the exceptions to the curfew? Going to and from work, doing a supervised role for a parent, I may not be saying that right, but there's a whole array of ones.
I'll go ahead and go through them.
And people need to know that also, 'cause they're saying, "Well, you're keeping people off the streets that may have legitimate things." Well, there's exceptions for those.
Right. Let me, and let me, let me just point out that the reason the Dallas, Texas curfew ordinance survived is because it had these very specific exceptions.
Right, but people need to realize it.
When a juvenile is accompanied by the juvenile's parent, the law would not apply. If they're attending or returning home on a direct route from a city event, a school activity, religious activity, civic organization activity, or a place of public entertainment, such as a movie, a play, or a sporting event, when the juvenile is engaged in legal employment and is returning from work, when the juvenile, with the consent of their parent, is engaged in interstate travel through Hagerstown, when the juvenile is actually on the property where the juvenile resides or on the sidewalk abutting their property, when they're exercising their free speech-protected rights under the Constitution, including their rights of assembly, their rights to exercise a freedom of religion, as, and that, those provisos require actually advance notice to the department that, you know, we're going to a religious service, and it'll run late, that sort of thing, and in case of an emergency, it wouldn't apply.
Okay, I think that allows, it's, it's a pretty thorough list of things that give a lot of leeway, and I, I had some trouble with the weekend thing being at 11:00 for 15- and 16-year-olds, but going to and from a place of entertainment. So, if they're on an area, they're on a date, which at that age, they're doing already, you know, things like that, they can do them as long as they have a reasonable explanation. But, just hanging on the corner is, is, is what we, is, is what is not permitted, or, yeah, for under the curfew, just, just hanging.
And for a few of these juveniles are going to be walking from the movie theaters or other places, they're going to be in a car, and there's not an officer in the world who's gonna pull over a vehicle because they suspect a juvenile is in it when nobody has caused any problem whatsoever, or call. See, and, and I think we all agree with Kristin said and what the chief said. This is complaint-driven. This isn't oriented towards seeing how many juveniles we can go out and have our police spend time on picking up any more than, than we want them arresting every single person for disorderly conduct without trying to stop it first. I, so I, I think we're all in the same sheet of music.
I'd like to highlight that point that the chief mentioned about complaint-driven, because I was at the neighborhood meeting where over 100 people showed up, and I was quite frankly shocked when it was suggested that if people see something, that they need to say something and call the police, and a number of people said, "Well, I shouldn't have to." The assumption being that Hagerstown Police Department are just waiting on every corner for something bad to happen, and that it's possible to prevent every crime, and it's just not the case. So, I don't think we can reinforce the message enough that if people see something, they need to say something and call the police. You're not bothering them, that's why we hire them to protect our neighborhoods and streets, so please, if you see something, say something. It's the only way we can get a grip on these matters, so. Ms. Nye, do you have any input, feedback?
No, I just hope it works.
So, you support the recommendation from the chief?
Well, I don't, you know, at least we're looking at a timeline and we're looking at parents, so. The only thing that I will, I have received this, and I don't know if anybody else did or not, but it was an email that came in and said, "I'm, I'm writing to lend my support for modification to an earlier time of curfew errors for juveniles. I suggest warnings be given to those juveniles who violate the curfew times with fines imposed on parents for repeated violations." Okay? "For those parents who cannot afford to pay the fine, community service could be arranged in lieu of monetary consideration." Again, this is this person's view. This might be an excellent deterrent to violation of curfew where we could all benefit." And then it goes on to say, "As far as what is happening in Baltimore and how the number of juvenile offenses have decreased since the curfew had, has taken effect." I think with what we have, hopefully, it will, it'll fly. I'm hoping that, yes, with you, that the people do call in. I know that in the area of the North End, it's a whole different avenue, as in thinking that it should happen immediately from the police, as they, they should be there, where when the one from Cannon came in said, you know, "We just get tired of calling." So, you have two aspects here, okay, of two ends of towns, but knowing at least we have something, that's gonna be the thing. And, you know, it's a matter now of running with it and hoping that something does happen, because we've got problems. And I don't, I'll be glad to stand up and scream it, "We've got problems." And I hear more about Fair Grounds Park as after-hours than enough, that we need to really put somebody there and keep them there to grab them from wherever they're at, because once they filter, we're out at Cortland, come into there, and go wherever else, and they'll be visiting some other place now since the other Sheetz is closed, but.
Yeah, with, with Fair Grounds Park, we, just as a reminder, we put an auxiliary policeman in there with Rodney and, and Junior's help. They're, they're paying for that to, out of their program to support that. So, they're there in the afternoons, and our complaints from Fair Grounds have completely dropped off this year versus last year. Now, we have had some complaints at the basketball court, we've asked our officers to keep track of that, and then we're in there every day at 10:00 as well, 'cause I can see the field interview cards that come in every night, and two, three times a week, we're catching people in that park that are not supposed to be there after hours.
Oh, yeah. I mean, this is where they.
So, it's getting patrolled.
Yeah, and honestly, they're coming also from Washington Gardens over. You know, this is where they go in. They camp out, they bring their blankets out on Fair Ground, whoever lives on Fair Ground. But, it is, you know, it's a beautiful park.
It is.
And it's being used for things that it shouldn't be used for, and that's why this park, that's such an active park, really needs to have that manpower there. But, like I said, you know, at least you brought in the part of where the parents should face some responsibility, so we'll see, like I said.
We're gonna have promotional videos that say, "It's 10:00 PM. Do you know where your child is?"
Well, I'm hoping.
Because I think public awareness is important.
Well, and, and I'm hoping that.
You have to get the word out.
I'm hoping that once they realize that, you know what, the city means business, that hopefully it's not going to be as bad for the police, that they are going to realize that, you know what, they do mean business. And believe me, a lot of these kids just as soon stand and spit in your face as to tell them anything, so we'll see how this all works.
Yeah, I think that's why keeping it a criminal offense will give us a little more help with that, so.
So, when would we want to bring it in for adoption or introduction? We could have a special session?
I think we can probably introduce by the end, end of this month. I guess the October regular session, if that would be satisfactory.
Is it possible to introduce before and then adopt on the 28th?
We can, if, if we still wanna target adoption. We only have to have the six days expire, so we could introduce on the 21st.
Okay. Do we have to act on the other one?
No, we, that, the other one will just die if it's not acted upon in 60 days.
How about that, if we shoot for the 21st for introduction, adoption on the 28th, it would take effect 30 days after October 28th.
Okay, good. Good. Thank you very much, Chief. Mr. Boyer.
Hours and the age.
Hours, age, and the changes in reference to the, the parents.
Good job. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Alley lighting requests. Mr. Spiker, how are you?
Good.
Nathan Friday.
Mr. Friday, how are you?
Kind of as a segue to Mark's earlier discussion, lighting for certain areas of the, of the city is a great concern, and we work with the Hagerstown Police Department to supply lighting in areas that are needed. The cost of that has risen in recent years due to the addition of lights, and with the loss of our, as you're all well aware, our one and two customers, the lighting that we provide to the city of Hagerstown has become the number-one customer of the Hagerstown Light Department, to the tune the general fund expends about $610,000.
That's just for streetlights?
Just for the use of the streetlights within the city confines. Of course, the city annexes property, and so, you know, we do gain lighting that way. We've taken care of all the major arterial streets for additional lighting at cost to the, to the Hagerstown Light Department. Through CIP, we have supplied the downtown core with ornamental pedestrian lighting. We have that discussion with the Maryland Public Service Commission. You know, we've never had any issues with, with their blessing on that, but the addition of lighting external to areas that don't benefit the good of the entire ownership of the Hagerstown Light Department, all of our customers that use it, we've always done at a cost, at-cost basis to whomever requires it. The Terrace had a special lighting project that went on, paid for wholly by the residents of the Terrace. We have special agreements with Cortland Manor, Summerlin Manor, Cortland, Cortland Villas in regard to the operation of systems out there. And when new developments are annexed into the city, one of the requirements is that the city does supply lighting, but the developer does all the installation of wire conduit. The lights operated until six months after the streets are, are taken over by the city. So, we do get control of them, but the main cost is borne by someone else. Just listed out, kind of what we've done in the past and what the charges are for the addition of this lighting. When we supply it to the Hagerstown Police Department or Public Works, whomever, we do the work at cost, we don't charge the overhead, so basically, the light department eats the cost of the, of the benefits, insurances, taxes, is all borne by us, so we do it as a straight at-cost basis. If not, it would be about 50% surcharge for labor, for vehicles, and 25% on materials. We give everything at cost, no pass-throughs to the, to any of the, other departments when we do the work. What we would propose is, in the future upcoming discussions, that we develop a CIP funded by the general fund for use, for a request for any of the, any of the other departments. Makes it much easier for us to go ahead. We'll do the engineering for the work, work through the process, work with the group, what kind of lighting they think will work best. We're looking at some changes to our lighting standards for what we can supply, but it would just, operationally, be much better than we go to Mark's. And Mark, you know, give us a number to charge it to, or whomever. Sometimes it's a struggle, it's a grant can be reimbursed into the CIP, but to have a developed CIP for us to draw it of would be a great assistance to us to supply lighting to other groups of the city. You know, as a not-for-profit, it's tough for us to, to forego that initial cash outlay to, to supply lighting. It, it is a relatively inexpensive proposition, you know, you know, dusted dawn light basically is $200 for an installation. You know, some of the alleys, we're getting requests to work with them for some of our alleys that need some upgraded lighting, and, and of course, once again, we work with them and give them the pricing as such, but we'll continue that practice now. The other groups have, you know, contributed what they can when we do those projects, but for us to move forward.
Would this be something that if a neighborhood group decided they wanted a light in this alley or that alley, and there's, I think they still get $1,000 or something each neighborhood group, is that still?
Yeah.
Yes.
Every neighborhood's group. So, they, would that be something that they'd be able to use those funds on as well?
In my opinion, yes.
I mean, that's the kinds of things, I think, that we want them to come up with.
One thing that, for consideration, or two points really, is we do get complaints for overlighting in areas.
Sure.
We've had a few specific, when you've been involved in, in one, we've had to go out and take lights down.
Right.
Because of what the individual considers as light intrusion.
And speaking of that, and this is a question, I don't expect an answer on now, but for both you and the chief, is it a better crime deterrent and ultimately less expensive in the long run, and is it possible, instead of putting up dusted dawn lights, that we put up lights that have motion detectors on them, so that you're not running into the, one, the overlighting complaints? Two, my guess is, this is just a, a simple guess, and this wouldn't be from you, Mike, but from the chief, I would expect that if somebody walks somewhere and a light comes on, that's a much greater deterrent than the light being there all the time and then tr- but I also don't know the practicality, if you can do that.
You put all the lights on there.
Well, a good example of that.
I don't know.
A good example of that is.
That's a good.
If you go down the 200 block of South Penn State Street, which is a sparsely lit area, I mean, there's hardly any lights at nighttime, but about halfway down that block, somebody, there's a White House there on the left that has a driveway, and, and it's pretty well, well-kept property, but as soon as you go through this very dark area, for about a half-block stretch, that light comes on and it's like.
Our synagogue has motion detectors. It's light up immediately when you walk.
And we have this discussion with customers who make requests, because it's not our responsibility to light private areas. And we say, "You can help yourself, if you're in that area, install motion detectors, remove vegetation in the back." A lot of what we see in the alleys, you know, the vegetation is so thick, you can't force light through them, so you need the assistance of the customers who own that to take some of that back. We trim around the lights and get the light down, but you can't force it through other dark areas in the property. We keep the public rights away as open as possible, so we do try to work with customers, let them know, "That's a very good option for you to work with." We would have to look at it, it's system-wide, with our voltages and what it requires, it might be a little, a little tough to, to work through that. But, we will look at it, yes.
There's a light on your pole in the alley behind my house, which is behind the, the security place, the dynamark or whatever, and that lights on all the time, and I mean, it lights up the entire area, but the garage.
And I mean, it lights up the entire area, but the garage right underneath it was broken into, you know, three or four weeks ago. That light's always on, but that's just an observation.
It's a visual safety factor. We met this morning, Chief, and Bruce, myself, and some others, just to have those discussions on the security. It gives someone, knowing that they can see who's moving in the alley behind them. It's more of that, you know, type of assistance than an actual deterrent at times.
I like the motion light idea. I just...
Yeah, I think to the degree that we can do that. And I also think that you brought up, Mayor, funding through neighborhoods first. While that's a very appropriate use of the funds if they want to, what I'm hearing may be much more important is a combination of our appropriate staffs to work with Jonathan and Neighborhoods First. I mean, you look at some of our groups and to try to identify areas that Mike and the chief can feed into the Neighborhoods Group first to say, "You know, we've identified these properties that really are a hindrance and really are a problem if you want to be crime-free." We have a lot of these folks in the North End where these problems are happening on Hamilton and Oak Hill and the Terrace. Having the past had their backyard set up so you wouldn't be seen. And it was always a nice thing to have. Now I think you're finding, a lot of these folks are finding that that unfortunately is turning into a net negative on crime prevention. And maybe education would help. Because a lot of these homes have homeowners that can absolutely afford motion sensors. If we had to them the identification of where and even helping them out, saying, "This is where you can get this stuff. This is how much it costs," I think this may be also a whole neighborhood, part of our neighborhood policing in conjunction with Neighborhoods First. I don't know...
Well, I know they do the SEP Ted presentations in Neighborhoods First with the crime prevention through environmental design and...
Sure, but now I'm talking about specific properties, specific places, instead of just a general education.
So having the neighborhood groups help identify the needed alley lighting...
Along with the police. It may be the police identify it to the neighborhood groups and you try to get something done through that method. Just a thought process.
Jonathan Kearns, as he lays on through Neighborhoods First, through DCED, and through us, we work with Jonathan on just this installation and assistance. So some of that's in place already.
But what I heard you say also is you would want a capital improvement plan.
Exactly. For us to be able to pull out funding, there'd be no hesitation. The funding's in place. When they make the request, we go out, engineer, design it, and we're out there very quickly to get it done.
And currently, you say, "Don't have that. It's all coming out of your regular funds."
What little bit we can do. Now, we work on change-outs on the major arterial right-of-ways, you know, on the streets. In the alleys is a different story. That's where we have to depend on funding from other sources. It takes them a lot of secure funding sometimes, so there's that delay.
That's correct. Another thing we talked about is just, you know, I think ultimately, city light has to say, "Yes, this can work," or "No, it can't work." Because this is kind of like connecting to the water system, you know? Those guys, we're going to get some requests where maybe they're going to have to say, from an engineering light standpoint, "It's not going to work."
Right.
But I think clearly requests come from Neighborhoods First, the police department, Jerry Kendall, others, and then Mike and Nathan evaluate.
Mr. Brubaker.
Good to meet you. Because I have a question along those very lines. You know, you're working with a group or an individual owner wants a light out behind their property, but it seems to me you need to consider an alley locked, an alley block rather than an individual request. Because that might not be the optimum if you're going to light up or illuminate the whole alley.
Yes.
So, and again, if there were no trees or no obstacles, I assume that there's some kind of formula that you'd use in order to determine the number of lights you need it. Right, standard, the radius of the thing and all that. So it would seem to me, what is the minimum distance you would do in order not to waste money by doing one particular one?
As you do a study, it's by different type of lights, cutoff lights, non-cutoff lights, different wattages. They all have a different photometric spread. So you have to, you balance, and Nathan can answer this better. And I'll let him go without it.
Couldn't take this number on what it would cost to do so many linear feet of...
Yeah, and that's where we would engineer. You know, they have their SEP Ted standards. We have engineering standards we look at also. So kind of marry the two so that you get the coverage you need in there.
And every, of course, every block length is different, blah, blah, blah. But what I'm saying, though, is, to me, you'd need to engineer one block-to-block alley at a minimum to get the right effect rather than...
Absolutely.
...one light right in the middle of it that has a startling, and maybe with motion detectors. I'm not against that. I think it sounds like kind of a neat idea, you know?
Do they even make motion detector streetlights?
Well, and listen, when that question...
I mean, I don't know.
But when that question is asked, I would suggest that we need to also consider thinking out of the box.
Or even solar power.
That we can be talking potentially about something other than streetlights. And I don't have an answer to that. But we don't have to be talking about big overhead lights. And we don't have to be talking about super bright lights. We could be talking about smaller, more frequent lights, set up on a different voltage with motion detectors. But this clearly is stuff that, you know, we got staff who can answer whether this is practical or can be done. I have greatest faith that they can look at it and figure out what can and can't be done.
The present lighting we use now, the HID lights, high-pressure sodium, mercury vapor, metal halide, they take a few minutes to warm up and come to full illumination. So in that case, for motion detection, we'd have to find another standard lighting for instant-on.
Like LED, which would be cheaper in the long run? And if we could go to something, you know, just thinking out loud, if you had an LED light with a motion detector setup, it certainly would not cost us the power that the dust-of-dawn sodium light would cost, right?
Correct. And then you come into the question then of, "How do we bill you? What's the usage?" Because we use a strict formula. We calculate how many hours of light, how many hours a night a certain light is on, and that's how the billing goes by the usage of that. So how do we know how much it's used? So it has some other complications.
And that's why your answers may very well beat us, is you guys have some really good ideas that on a citywide municipal level are totally impractical. And that we have to have the homeowners be responsible.
A joint effort by everyone.
Exactly. That may be very, very possible.
Well, and so does everyone support a CIP? Mr. Munson, please.
I do support CIP. I think it's a great idea to allocate the resources. But I want to make this point. I like Lou's idea about the motion lights. I like it a lot. But my neighborhood has had little experience with that. Prior to the last city election, we had all these kids who were cutting through the alley, loose galley alley, who go over to Cortland, I assume, or vice versa. And things started, started to go missing in a neighborhood, like bicycles and snowblowers and things like that. So my neighbor decided she was going to put a motion light on the side of her house, and the side of her house is right beside the alley, which was a great idea. However, it turns out that the first time the motion light worked, and the three or four kids, five kids, whatever it was, were walking through there, when the motion light came on, the kid nearest the motion light picked up a brick, and that was the end of the motion light. So she called in an electrician and had a special cover put on the motion light, which would allow the light to shine, but wouldn't allow bricks and other impediments like that to get into it. So if we're going to do that, let's make sure that we do it in a way that those lights are going to be protected and continue to work.
We'll do some research and then give you the pros and cons of what it could be, if it's feasible for us to work with and what facilities are in place, so.
And the other thing, again, thinking outside of the box and hearing what you've said, and it makes all the sense in the world, is maybe instead of thinking about the expense that we're talking about, if we do think that this individual home's motion lighting in conjunction with each other would be a good idea, you know, maybe we consider subsidizing that. So instead of just going to homeowners and saying, "You know, this would really be a good thing for you to do, and this is how much it'd probably cost, and this is where you can get it," go to them and say, "Listen, this is a really good idea, and this is the expense of it, and the city is going to subsidize what, I don't know how much things would cost, whether it's 10%, 50%, or 100%. That may be much cheaper in the long run than trying to put overhead lights in." And it's just, again, another thought process of trying to get this achieved.
It may be a $60 or $80 initial expenditure, and then usually John, it's $5 a year, $10 a year. So financially, you may be better off to look at that, have John's brief look through with the customer, see if it's feasible to do. Absolutely.
All lighting, that sort of thing.
Yeah, when you look at some of the other things, we're willing to help with community. And this is one of the answers for our folks that have been saying, "Hey, look at something other than just downtown. This is all about our neighborhoods."
Well, knowing the ride that myself and my neighbor takes, I just think that it's really important to have the lighting where it is needed. And I know Mike and I've gone back and forth with this, and I think that the most important thing then is by having that lighting is then having those cameras up and running. And we need to have somebody then to also, and I know they can go back and they can check, but when things are going on, at least we've got those cameras in place. And it's not going to be, look, you know, I mean, Mark is, you know, we've got this now and a big fund for cameras, and it still is not going to be enough. And that's not invasion of privacy. This is known as protecting your city. And I just, you know, I get to the point that I just get so tired of hearing that. But the lighting that we have that is sufficient, we need to see where it is not sufficient. And the places, like I told you, that are in the North End, you cannot see in those alleys. And they're just spaced. The lights are just spaced too far apart.
Any other feedback, thoughts, questions?
Good job.
Maybe we'll come back in November, sell us some thoughts on the fixtures and styles, that kind of thing. But we'll build towards a CIP project.
And they also like to shoot out the big lights.
Oh, yeah.
They love it down there at 709 Mulberry.
Do they?
Uh-huh.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
I think I've had discussions.
All right, that brings us to city administrators' comments. Are we open for Columbus Day on Monday next week?
We are.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
We're closed. Veterans Day.
Right.
We're open next week.
Mr. Brubaker?
Well, I was not able to make it, but I want to thank all the citizens that turned out and the staff that helped do the trail walk for the new trail and the charade afterwards. I think we had a good turnout. Understand we got a lot of good valuable input, and I appreciate it, and I hope it leads to, helps us lead to good success and good ideas for the trail.
Thanks. Mr. Alshire?
Just one thing. There's a tournament coming up, the City Course Friday, the Par for Pink. I'm sure they probably still have spots available. It's a great way to provide a contribution to a worthy cause and a very reasonable rate for the opportunity to play.
Great. Mr. Munson?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things I'd like to just mention. On last Saturday morning, there was a ceremony held at HCC to celebrate the life of former President Norman Shea, who died. I had a great deal of experience working with Norman when I was in legislature. And he was quite a great man. He did a lot of good things for the community. He did a lot of good things for the community college and helped it grow. And it was a nicely attended celebration of his life. Secondly, last Saturday night, there was a function at the library to celebrate the one-year anniversary of the opening of the library. See, you were there, Mayor, and Bruce was there. And it was a really nice function. They had a great crowd, great food. Their fried green tomato sandwiches were wonderful.
Those were 28 Souths, by the way.
Okay, 28 Souths. And the one thing that was very, very interesting was the program. They had a sculptor by the name of Toby Mendez, who is from Washington County and widely known, who discussed a project which is going to be part of the library in downtown in the future, a public art project. It was a very nice event, and it was just another great example of how well the library is serving the community. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Ms. Nye?
The Hoedown, this is coming Saturday.
Sure is.
I don't know the time.
I know, I'll be there. I'll be there at 1:00 to give a greeting, and I think it's until 4:00.
Usually it kicks off, yeah, it kicks off at 1:00, but I...
I'll be yodeling.
Yeah, right.
Or he-hawing or something.
But, you know, with the functions that we are having in the downtown and knowing that Urban Partners has said we need to have more in the downtown, of course, the Hoedown is out at Fairgrounds, which it rightly should be, it's just, I hope that we can move forward with more as far as using the downtown. And I have to really give thanks to Karen because I want to tell you, she puts both feet and how many others into everything that she sets forth, you know? And it really is a very, very good product after Karen gets done with it. That's it.
All right. Mr. Metzner?
No, no, thank you, Mayor.
All right, well, I do, I also want to echo some of the comments. The trail walk was a huge success, I think, to get two dozen people to show up on a weeknight like that. Of course, we had great weather, but I think there's a lot of exciting possibilities there. I made sure when I saw Commissioner Barr at the library function on Saturday to thank him for his cooperation with Ellsworth Electric, because they're one of the private property owners we're working with, along with the Housing Authority and the newspaper. There is already interest, as I'm sure everyone around this table knows, about possibilities for accessory uses to that trail. So people are looking at investment because of the fact that we're just talking about this trail. So I think that...
You point out, and they're very upbeat.
Very positive, and it was nice to be able to rearrange the furniture in this room and use it to have little stations and to have the public do some interactive kinds of things to get that stakeholder feedback. So I think that was great. I'm looking forward to seeing what comes of that. There's already been some great ideas being exchanged electronically about things that would be good assets down there. So good things to come on that. The evening at the Fletcher, I think, was great, and they're planning on having an annual celebration of the grand reopening of the library. The relief that Mr. Munson was describing is in celebration of transportation in Hagerstown. So it'll be a relief that'll be mounted on the wall behind the library in the rear entrance there. So it's going to be very nice. Just want to remind folks, there was a forum last night for the Board of County Commissioners. There's a forum tomorrow night for Board of Education candidates at 7:00 PM on Downsville Pike at the Board of Education Central Office. And on Monday, the 13th, there is a House of Delegates Forum on the 13th at 7:00 PM. They're all out at the Board of Ed Office, and they're all sponsored by the Herald Mail. I hope people are paying attention. And Thursday, this Thursday, the Food Bank is having an open house out on, I think it's McRand or McRand Court, is that right? Anyway, it's out towards 81. That's this Thursday. The 200th anniversary of the Star Spangled Banner is also this Thursday. It'll be at the Maryland Theater. We'll be unveiling a historic plaque or marker at 5:30. That's at the Maryland Theater, and of course, the Harvest Hoedown and the Par for Pink. My golf game is really bad, but I guess it's not a requirement, is it? You don't have to be a good golfer to play? All right. Well, that's it for me. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night. We are adjourned.